Good evening, everyone. Where can we start here? Good evening. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education regular meeting. Tonight is Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. We are live in the Brandywine High School auditorium, also broadcasting over Zoom. Ms. Harris, may I please have a call? Um, roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris. Uh, Ms. Pigeon, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening? This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Seven seconds.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's start it off with our high school reporters, beginning with Brandywine High School, Evan Gant.
Now I'm on, okay. No problem. That was really hot. Hi, board members. Hi, board audience. My name is Bobby Bear. I'm vice president of student council. Um, I'm a senior here at Brandywine. I'm pleased to be here tonight. Uh, Brandywine, we have a few highlights of academics that we'd like to talk about. First off is, uh, congratulations to Multi John. She won her physics division in the Delaware, Delaware Valley Science Fair this past three weeks ago, I believe. And then as our for our Vex Robotics Club, Jake Valentine, Morgan Lake, and Jacob Davis won first place and first place in Iowa, and now they're gonna go to the world championship. Math League won first place in Delaware, and that team consists of Anan John, Matthew Andrews, Thomas Bear, my brother, Multi John, and Jonathan Pay. Uh, this week, we had our senior soaker start, uh, which is very fun for seniors, uh, also really stressful. Spring fling week is coming up, and that is the, uh, sophomores. They're gonna do that. Uh, we're gonna have another pep rally. That'll be our third one, and also our third dance, not including prom. Uh, the Brandywine Music Tournament just recently played in Newcastle County Honors Band, which is a great achievement for them. I know a lot of the kids that were on it, and they seem to have a great time. Uh, the prom tickets have also started selling this week, and will be selling through May. Leaders of the Pack, which is a, uh, a new group founded at Brandywine, strives to, um, bring together student leaders and split them up into, uh, four different committees, uh, to achieve a lot of like student, um, uniqueness in the school. Like, for example, I'm in the service one, and we're gonna reach out to, uh, the three zip codes that we from Brandywine pull from, which would be Claymont, Wilmington, and around here. Um, so that's, we're doing a lot of new things with that, which is really awesome. Last but not least, Frank Hanish and Noah Brumer created new signs of Brandywine logo in the engineering department, and now they're being hung around the school so that they can leave their legacy here. That is all. Any questions?
Do you know where those new signs ever come already, or are they going to be hung?
They're gonna be hung. They're not hung up yet.
Can you just, um, for the audience, can you explain what Senior Soakers is? Because I think it's really important for the community to know and be on the lookout.
So Senior Soakers is a game that, uh, seniors have been playing, at least here at Brandywine, I think for maybe nine years. Um, it's with water guns, so each senior has a target each week, and they have to get them by Saturday at midnight. So like, for me, I just got my target today, and I have to get him by Saturday. Also, I'm out, and each week you have a new target. You also have to watch out for who has you. And there's, there's a lot of rules, like, you know, can't be inside someone's home unless invited, uh, no shooting out of cars. That's how kids are gonna get accidents, like Sally's. Not school property, because that's, you know, people just get out of that pretty easily. It's really fun, though. Oh, and goggles. You can wear goggles, uh, not every day except for Wednesday and Saturday. Uh, that means you're safe, so I had to buy myself some pink ones, because why not? That's, is that summing up? Any questions about Senior Soakers?
Did I hear that that's a fundraiser?
Yeah, so half of the money will go to the, um, it will, each person that signs up is ten dollars. Half of that money will go to the person, and the other half will be for our after prom. And right now, we have, I think, forty-three, so it's like four hundred thirty dollars. So it's really good.
Sounds like fun. Make sure everyone stays safe.
Yeah, we created a lot of different rules and made them really specific this year, just to make sure that nothing would happen.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Concord High School. We have a full slate today. Mohammed, Tassin, Rashil, and Mira.
All right. Good evening, school district board members, teachers, and families of Brandywine School District. My name is Mohamed Udeen, student council president here at Con- sorry, not here at Concord High School, but at Concord High School. And tonight, I am accompanied by the vice president of student council, Tassin Nakand. So tonight, we have also a presentation, just kind of like similar to the last board meeting. But this board meeting presentation, we're gonna do a little twist on it. Instead of the traditional month recap, we're actually gonna do a full year recap for you guys and try and highlight the accomplishments the student council, as well as the Concord community has accomplished. One of the reasons for this, one of the reasons for this is that unfortunately, this will be our last board meeting that we're gonna be presenting at. Um, the next May board meeting, we're gonna have our new student council officers present there. We can wanna get their, uh, feet wet, kind of understand the roles of student council and things like that, start preparing them for the future. So here's just an introduction. Uh, the two thousand twenty-two, the two thousand twenty-three school year was a essentially the first year, real school year since COVID. I mean, we did have last year, but again, the kind of vibe was off. I'm, I'm assuming teachers, you guys felt that same uneasiness within your classrooms. And secondly, this was a very historic year for Concord High School. We've done a lot of accomplishments, done a lot of great things, and we just wanna highlight those tonight. So here's just a simple table of contents. We're gonna go through that year, year recap that I was talking about. And then we're gonna highlight some student achievements in regards to colleges, and then, of course, the concluding remarks. So, starting off with October of two thousand twenty-two, as we know, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Numerous clubs, organizations, and sports teams within the Concord High School community raised, um, did a numerous amount of fundraiser, and we had, we raised over four thousand dollars for the Breast Cancer Coalition. Else, as we also know, that October is homecoming season, and that picture right there is from our pep rally. We had a parade, floats, things like that. It's kind of had that community vibe going around. And our homecoming was actually one of the most successful homecomings of Concord for a while now. We had over seven hundred and fifty students attend, as well as almost twenty, over twenty thousand dollars in profit. Continuing to November of two thousand twenty-two, this was kind of, again, the Thanksgiving era. We really wanted to give back. As you can see, the food drive, we, um, raised, we collected, uh, over a hundred fifty canned goods, which we, um, donated to the Claymont Community Center, something that's very in district. We also had a toy drive, where we, we had a toy drive where we collected a hundred toys and raised over two, and over two hundred fifty dollars for the AI DuPont Children's Hospital, as well as a coat drive where we collected over a hundred coats, in which we, in which we redistributed to students in need within our community, the Brandywine School District community. And then finally, December of two thousand twenty-two, we started off with Stockings for Soldiers. The Interact and NHS Club volunteered there nu- uh, numerous times without, or throughout December, and we accumulated over two hundred hours of community service during that time. And we also had a breakfast for Santa, where the football team, um, held a breakfast for Santa in-house at Concord High School, and we raised over five hundred dollars for childhood cancer. But continuing on the next slides, Tassin Nakand.
All right, so moving on, we're gonna start off with our second dance, which was our winner ball. It wasn't as big as homecoming, which we expected, but we had almost four hundred people in attendance, which is a very huge amount. Um, and next up, we do have DECA. So we had twenty-two members who qualified for the international competition in Orlando. So that basically means twenty-two of our, uh, team, like twenty-two of our students, placed first, second, or third at states. Um, myself included, I placed first, so I'll be leaving for Orlando this Friday. Um, continuing on to February, we had our BSU kickback, which, again, with our theme of community, over a hundred people attended. Lots of celebration, cultural food, and guest speakers. Uh, Legally Blonde was a very big thing for us. Thirteen thousand dollars in profit. You could see a picture of our lead cast over there, and over eight hundred people in attendance over that three-day period. Uh, next up, we have March. So we're gonna start off with our MORP, which was our third dance of the year. With an in-house DJ, so one of our students was, uh, one of the DJs that night, and I would like to, like, talk about how this was our third dance of the year, not including prom, which is very successful, which is a very big deal for Concord, because we haven't been able to do that for a few years. Um, so now, we'll be passing out, um, our eco bricks to your tables behind you. Um, so basically, our eco bricks are building, basically bricks to hold up like gardens and stuff out of, uh, water bottles. And you could feel how firm they are and stuff. So they should be, we'll be using those to create like gardens and hold up like bricks and stuff. And it's really just water bottles and old rec- recyclable plastic that is just packed in as much as you can. It's a really big deal, because each one of those bottles take around thirty to forty-five minutes just to pack with just squeezing pencils over and over again. So we've been working really hard to get that done, and we have a lot done right now. Next slide.
All right, so we kind of discussed the things we've accomplished, but I also wanna, uh, discuss the things we are hoping to accomplish and hoping to actually, um, solidify and get done. As you may know, the joint student council has been doing a fundraiser with the B positive, um, organization. Here's a flyer with some simple information and things like that. I think it was just the first week we've kicked it off, but Concord High School is right now at one thousand sixty-five dollars. And we hope that Brandywine High School Mount Pleasant, it may be a slow start, but we, we do really hope that you guys will be able to be able to, um, raise as much money as this BSD Fest event that we're doing, May thirteenth, from ten to four, ten, sorry, it's ten to two PM. It's gonna be just about community. Yes, we are in the lead right now, but we hope eventually Mount can overtake us, maybe even Brandywine. And whoever overtakes us, it overtakes us. It's a friendly competition. At the end of the day, we make as much money as possible, and it goes back to the community. And this is just a rough estimate of how much we've raised, um, not including the B positive organization. We've raised around six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, again, to the Delaware Breast Cancer Coalition and other community groups within our area.
Continuing on with that, you can see this big number, four thousand community service hours throughout this year. Uh, it's a really big deal between all of our clubs and organizations throughout the school, and I think that's a very big accomplishment for us, and I hope we could do even more next year. Uh, next slide. So, this is big. So these are our senior college decisions that we have so far. I'd love to congratulate everybody who's on this page. Uh, it's a really big deal to just get into college and commit, and it's a really big step in your life. Um, we could see that we have a big amount right here, and this will lead me on to our next slide, where I am proud to commit, pronounce, announce my commitment to the University of Michigan for double major in computer engineering and robotics.
And I just wanna again, what Tassin just said, I just wanna proudly announce my commitment to the University of Virginia, double majoring in economics and psychology as an ECHO scholar. But yes. But yeah, as you guys kind of look through all of the pictures, we had a lot of groups, we had a lot of, um, arms around each other, things that we couldn't do around that COVID time. Again, I've been hammering this idea down every single board meeting, but Concord has been really trying to work on that aspect of community. And I think this two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, we've accomplished such a thing, and I just want to thank every single district board member, every single teacher, and every single family for letting us accomplish this, accomplish this. Thank you. And as this is our last board meeting, does the board, do the board members have any questions, remarks, anything at all for us?
I just wanna say, first of all, congratulations on a fantastic year. Uh, thank you so much for your leadership, uh, for the Concord community, not just Concord, but really for our entire district. You've been an inspiration. Uh, you certainly inspired me, uh, and motivated me personally, and gave me, given me some ideas, and, um, I look forward to your success in college, and I do look forward to, uh, maybe one day your presidential inauguration. I think you have a great career in politics.
Thank you. I just wanted to also say congratulations to both of you, and, uh, to seeing good luck in Florida. Quite an accomplishment.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, congratulations. Two, two fantastic schools, you know, clearly you, and this goes for all of our, uh, high school government speakers that come up weekend and week out. You're all very accomplished and, you know, clearly self-driven. I'm sure you all have, you know, strong support systems at home. Uh, and I hope, uh, that Brandywine School District played, you know, so, a, a, a solid part in developing the young men and women that you are, and hope that you'll remember the education that you got here at Brandywine School District and come back and share the ideas and the accomplishments that you continue to do in the future with the younger generations. You, you're clearly on a fantastic path, and what, what a great way to present it with a look back on what you've done, showing the, you know, the, the real numbers of the hours you put in, the dollars you've raised. What's not on there that probably can't be measured is the impact that you've had on your peers and the community around you. You, you, you can't measure that, but know from this board and this school district that it's, that it's seen, and there are bright, bright things to come for, for both of you and the rest of our high school speakers. So thank you.
Thank you.
And one, one other question. What, what are you doing with the B positive fundraising to kind of provoke the other schooled, schools to get in on the fundraising and have that, you know, fun rivalry for the fundraising challenge?
So as of right now, we're just kind of promoting everything on social media. I know each respective high school has created their own respective flyer, and we're just pushing that on Facebook, Instagram, also the district website, I'm, I'm very certain of. And yeah, so we also have, I know Concord's side, I think Brandywine and Mount were working on a similar thing. We're having, um, on the email chains that go out every single week or so often to parents and households, we actually have inserted that B positive link, and then the flyer, as well as some instructions, some information, things like that, just to distribute information to all families.
Fantastic. And I was gonna say, when I, when you showed the group photo of all the decisions, I said, oh, my gosh, how humble. They didn't even put themselves up there. You certainly earn, earned your spot of recognition, so I'm glad you included your decisions, and best of luck to both of you.
Thank you. And, um, continuing on with a little bit about B positive, this isn't just like the high schools, this is to the whole district, elementary schools, middle schools. The high schools are just the three teams, and if you're like a parent in elementary, middle school, maybe donate to your feeder team, donate to like whatever you want. Just like, as long as you help out and donate to the community, it's open to everybody, not just high school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Mount Pleasant High School, Dylan Kim and May Wong.
Appreciate that.
Uh, good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Brandywine School District Board, and members of the Brandywine School District community. My name is Dylan Kim, and I am the student council president of Mount Pleasant High School. At the beginning of this month, the Mount Pleasant High School Drama Department held their long-awaited production of Broadway's Frozen. After having won the United States of Frozen contest, to be the only high school in Delaware to be given the rights to produce, uh, the play, the drama team was hard at work to deliver the best way they could. They did, indeed, deliver with an amazing four productions ran throughout the weekend. Uh, the performance was stunning, and the cast and crew did a wonderful job. We'd like to recognize and commend the drama team for, for a job well done. Uh, the two thousand twenty-three quest of all is kicking off this week. It's becoming like a tradition now, starting last year. Uh, so a week-long competition where teams compete to earn the most points for a prize of collection of gift cards. It's like a lot of weird kinds of challenges, but it's pretty interesting. Uh, we're excited to see how our teams compete the various challenges throughout this event. We've had a lot of engagement already, even though this is like the first day, so we're looking forward to, um, how it's gonna go for the rest of the week. Uh, the class of two thousand twenty-three is holding their annual senior soakers competition, uh, like Brandywine. Uh, they're assigned a fellow classmate to target with a water gun, and they must complete their mission without getting hit first. Uh, the prize is a free ticket to this year's prom, and the profits will go towards, uh, this year's senior prom. Uh, last year's event was quite hectic, and today I just saw someone getting targeted in the parking lot, so yeah, it's gonna be pretty crazy, but, uh, best of luck to the seniors. Uh, the Black Student Union and Girls Empowered at Mount are hosting their third annual greet night steps showcase on April twenty-eighth at six thirty PM. It's a night of ent- entertainment and exploration of the rich culture African-American sororities and fraternities provide through stepping, scholarship, and service. Uh, it will include stepping by African-American sororities and fraternities, dance performances, drum night finale, uh, talent from our own various students, DJ, food trucks, and a lot more. As always, our Mount Pleasant's High School community would like to thank the school board for their continued efforts to provide a high-quality education for us all. Uh, thank you, and we are open to questions at this time.
I'll just say the production of, uh, Frozen now had a lot of media coverage, and Mount Pleasant Drama Department did a fantastic job with it, so congratulations to all of them. It was a nice, uh, I think feather in the cap for Mount Pleasant High School and the district as a whole to be the only, only school in the state to, to have that production. So congrats to them.
Thank you.
Definitely, it was a lot of fun, uh, to read on social media, uh, from people who were posting about the musical and do some really great things that Mount Pleasant is doing, and I, I also wore my flag pin today, so in honor of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. I have one, one question or say, so I heard, I heard the, uh, JROTC teams might be headed to Dallas for the world championship?
Uh, yes, so our eighty-nine zero-three K team is gonna go to Texas, uh, this May for both robotics and JROTC. And also, yeah, they'll be competing in both this year again. I'm excited to see how well they're gonna do. They got a pretty good stuff last year, so, yeah, pretty exciting.
And Dylan, any post-high school plans that you would like to share?
What's that? I'm still thinking, uh, you know, maybe policy, I don't know.
Big decision. Take your time. Don't rush it.
You're a junior, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, junior, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, are you a senior? Any plans you wanna share? Great, congratulations. Best of luck to you.
Thank you, Bobby.
As always, high school representatives, welcome to stay, um, but we know you have a full plate, so if you need to exit, we understand. That'll take us to our special presentations and recognition. We'll start off, uh, with Dr. Kutch, uh, sharing some information on our Vex IQ extravaganza winners.
Good evening, board members. Board President Scrobob, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Holer, esteemed guests tonight. It is my pleasure to report and on and celebrate the elementary Vex Robotics programming for this year, and if you didn't know, this is Robotics Month, so it's very timely. Mentors and school teams are back. We're so excited. It's been such a joy this year to have back in person our Vex IQ after-school programming. Six out of our nine elementary schools have active teams, and I'd like to thank the following teachers that were able to find the time after school and on weekends to work with our young robotiers, teaching them teamwork, perseverance, STEM skills. It's Mary Rose Rybeck from Claymont Elementary, Samantha Parker from Fourwood Elementary, Michael Phobes from Harlan Elementary, Ashley Sforza from Lancashire Elementary, Warren Mays from Maple Lane, and I'd like to point out about Warren is that he is a Vex IQ certified instructor. There are only two in the state, and he is one of them, and we're proud to have him. And Matthew Janicki from Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Our robotiers are back. We have grown twenty percent in the number over last year. We're actually forty short from our two thousand nineteen pre-pandemic numbers. We've had more events, seven in this twenty-two, twenty-three season. Our first ever at Harlan and Lancashire, so we're so thankful and happy that the schools were able to host. Most of our teams played in fifty competition matches during those events. That is the largest number of competitions that we've ever had. Most teams played in three school matches, which means that they traveled around to three different buildings, uh, over three different weekends to participate. Uh, we have definitely gotten our return on investment, twenty-seven build hours resulting in fifty-plus matches. And the design, the design changes happened this year. Um, understanding that, looking at the weekend from a Saturday versus a Friday night, Friday night for the win. We got more participation on a Friday night. People gave us feedback. Families said, please, 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 we'd rather have it on Friday night than on a Saturday. So happy to see that change happen. Looking on to next year, I want you to notice that tagline, better than basketball. Moving forward, we'd like to see our robotics program have so much of the draw as our elementary basketball program. And if anybody's ever been to any of our elementary basketball games, you know what I'm talking about. Uh, we're planning on restarting to grow, uh, by encouraging our three elementary schools who are unable to participate this year, so we can get our full nine right across the board. And please make sure that you do save the date for March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, which will be our extravaganza this year, or next year, at Tally Middle School. We're gonna be sharing a little bit more about this year's extravaganza in just a second. And then also work with kids that code program to get even more robot programmers and grow that aspect of the robotics program. So our extravaganza was back. It's been a couple of years since we've had an in-person, um, full district-wide competition. It was held at Tally Middle School this past March eighteenth. We had thirty-nine teams, a hundred and twenty-nine robotiers. And just to be clear, robotiers are our students, but we call them robotiers. We had many VIP guests come to visit and partake and observe and even speak to our robotiers. We had the Governor John Carney, State Senator Sarah McBride, State Senator Kyle Evans Gay, Newcastle County Executive Matt Myers, State Representative John Cartier, BSD Board President John Scrobob was there, could, thank you for coming, and Cadet Sergeant Kevin Young. The students played two hundred and seventy-six matches, and we did have an awesome-looking twelve-foot inflatable Robosaurus named Boris. And you can kind of see him in the back of the picture. Very cute. Kids had a good time with that. So without further ado, we'd like to share a little bit about our extravaganza and what we, um, were able to partake in. And so if you can go ahead and show the video, that'd be great. And so, if you can go ahead and show the video, that'd be great.
Three, two, one.
Welcome to the 2023 Delmarva Extravaganza. This is the first Extravaganza since 2019, and we're really excited to be back. We're here with 40 teams of elementary school students from across the district, about 160 robotiers in total.
Mars side, begin in three, two, one, go.
How do we get kids engaged in STEM? Everybody knows that we need to get kids in STEM, but you stand up in front of a class, you try to teach them rise over run or Y equals mx plus b, and you often get a good percentage of the class with blank stares. Here, you have 100% engagement. And what you see here is just two, three, four steps away from the advanced engineering that DuPont, that Camors, that Insight, that a lot of our leading companies are doing right down the street.
Most time, they can only do the yellow one.
Getting involved in technology and robots, what it means to work together as a team. This is really an incredible, so many different elements, educational, teaching elements here. But most of all, for the kids, it's fun, you know? And if you can make learning fun, I think that's the key. And that's what's happening here, in my view.
This is one of the largest robotics events in the entire region. We're putting a stake in the ground saying Newcastle County in Delaware is the place to be for kids in robotics. You gotta come see what Brandywine School District is doing with robotics with the youngest of kids. It's really exciting.
Awesome, awesome, awesome experience, truly. And really, couldn't have done it without someone in this audience that I would like to recognize. Foster, if you could please stand. Foster Schucker, I'd like to thank you for all your help and support, helping us really build back, not only build back, but start this program here in the district and then build back as a result of the pandemic and run all 50 competitions. So, all the competitions leading up to the pandemic, the Extravaganza, the organization behind it, truly, the staff, working with staff, training staff, helping the kids. Couldn't have done it without you. So, thank you so, so very much for all your help and support. You got it. So, what we'd like to do right now is recognize our tournament champions. Please come up to the podium when your team name is called to be recognized. And then directly after, we'll ask you to go to the lobby, and we'll get some nice photos. So, at this time, I'd like to call up the Harlan Falcons, Matias Flores Calix, and Wyatt Nichols with mentor Michael Phobes. Come on up. They're so cute. All right, let's give them a nice round of applause. First place in the competition. But it was also a tie. And our also-first-place team, the Fourwood Sharks, Jason Flowers and Brendan Song. Please come on up with, if you're here, the mentors Samantha Parker and Jen Michalowicz. This is Brendan. All right, nice round of applause. So, I'd like to leave us with this. I wanna wish a very good luck to all our qualifying secondary students that will be competing in the world's competition in Dallas, Texas. Some at the end of April, some at the beginning of May. And also, this Wednesday night is your last chance to learn how to join middle and high school teams at Tally Middle School at 6:30 PM. This is for all of our current fifth to 11th grade students. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
I'll just echo your thanks to Foster. So, he lives and breathes robotics and is the driving force behind all the elementary everything that happens. And the birth of that Extravaganza, and it just grows every year, so.
Yeah, I know, I've shared this before, but, you know, my youngest son had an opportunity to do robotics years ago when the program was, you know, still kind of in its infancy. And to watch it grow over the years and see the competitions grow, you know, that is a lot to do because of you, Foster. And we thank you for the time that you give to the district for this program. And just watching it grow from the elementary level that's tripled up into the middle school and high school levels has been impressive to see and a great program for the district to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have an item that was scheduled for this evening but was left off the agenda. So, at this time, I'm seeking a motion to amend our agenda under special presentations to include our recognition of Lombardi and Carcroft, teacher educator and Behavior Health Professionals of the Year.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, who's doing the presentation? Delithia? Thank you.
It is always so exciting to hear the amazing things that our students are doing out in the schools. And as always, it is my distinct pleasure, along with Mr. Hakima Wicker from HR, to now acknowledge and celebrate some awesome educators in our district who are also doing equally outstanding work. I would like to invite to the podium, please, Principal Mike McDermott from Lombardi Elementary School. And I believe I saw Assistant Principal Kara Beach come on up so that we might acknowledge some of your outstanding educators while they're on their way. Tonight, from Lombardi, we will be celebrating their Teacher of the Year, Ms. Emily Bain. Ms. Bain, you can come on up now as well. And their Educator Support Professional of the Year, Kelly Pittman. Ms. Pittman, please come up and join us. And then finally, their Behavior Health Professional of the Year, Gabriella Fear-Vontini. I think I pronounced that right there. Mr. McDermott, welcome.
Good evening, board members and members of the community. Before I begin tonight, we have our Ms. Bain up here. Ms. Bain, come on up. I'd like to start with our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Emily Bain. Many years ago, I worked for a principal. His name was Lincoln Holer. You may recognize the name, now superintendent. And he always told me that in order to have a successful school and build a successful culture, you had to make sure that everybody was making impact. He said it didn't matter who the person was in the building, whether they were sweeping the floors, serving the food. Everybody had to have a connection, make a connection with the kids, the families, the staff. Some do more than others. Tonight, we have three staff members who go above and beyond and make connections with kids every single day. So, we'll start with Mrs. Bain. She graduated from West Chester University in 2014 and went on to receive her master's degree in 2019, all while going to, working as a teacher. She started at Lombardi in 2019, and during that short time, worked as a special education teacher in grades one, two, and now five. Her favorite. She's laughing because we moved her this year to grade five because we had some, quite a few needs there. We had some students that need a lot of support. The group was very diverse, and we needed to lean on, like Mr. Holer used to say, lean on some of your strongest teachers, and we appreciate you doing that. Over the years, she has provided special education services for students in varying classifications, including emotional disability, learning disability, traumatic brain injury, autism, and a variety of other classifications. To meet the students' needs, Emily adapts, modifies, scaffolds classwork, assessments, and homework, et cetera. She's an amazing educator and natural leader. I can almost guarantee that she will have a leadership role in the district at some point in the near future. As a teacher, she continues to look for leadership opportunities. For example, she was part of the Department of Education team for redesigning the old D-PASS evaluation system. She was a Girls on the Run coach, member of the MTSS school-wide team, special education team leader, and is also our MTSS tier-three lead, which is extremely important for our students. A few comments from her peers. Emily has taken the lead with her special education team and targeted team. She is a team player with her grade-level team. She'll take the time to help a fellow coworker in need and is always willing to work with any student, even if the student is not on her roster. She spends countless hours making modifications and accommodations for her students. She makes long-lasting connections with her families. Lombardi is lucky to have Emily. Emily supports teacher-students in the building and does amazing work. She is an amazing dedicated educator and a true role model for students. She is an amazing asset to Lombardi, has organized and implemented successful MTSS practices, and is thorough, caring, and efficient. She goes above and beyond for her students, truly wants the best of them and gets them, will take more than what they will give, whatever they need to make them successful. So, Emily, we thank you. I can't thank you enough for your support with MTSS, with the changes going to fifth grade, and just being a great staff member. Next up, Mrs. Pittman. Mrs. Pittman was one of our para-professionals at Lombardi School, and I remember her interview like it was yesterday. She was intelligent, confident, and she was extremely over experienced, too much experienced, with 25 years of teaching experience before coming back to us to be a para. But hiring a para, especially for a one-on-one student, can be very difficult. The person must get along well with the student, staff, and connect with the family. But we got extremely lucky because Kelly nailed all three of those. She works collaboratively with the homeroom and special education teacher to help modify and adapt work for her students that she supports. Nate, a student with Down Syndrome. She communicates with the teachers if the student is struggling or needs to be challenged more. And she communicates daily with the family, whether it's dojo message, email, or you'll see her off talking to the parents in the car line. During the past two years, Kelly has worked closely with Nate to improve his independence in the classroom, specials in places like the cafeteria where she needs to make him, works with them to make choices independently or with little support. In addition to supporting Nate, Kelly is always willing to support other staff members, students, or administration. As a principal, I can only pray that you'll, that we can hold on to you forever, at least until I retire. Before I end, I just have two comments from peers to sum up what Kelly is all about. Kelly is patient and caring. She is easygoing and such a joy to work with. She goes above and beyond for all students. She teaches, nurtures, and helps develop her students to their fullest potential and gives herself tirelessly to make sure they have a strong educational and emotional foundation. Thank you, Kelly, for supporting our student Nate and helping our staff and school be a better school. All right, last but not least, Nurse Gabby. Nobody calls her by her last name. She's just Nurse Gabby. And if you have a walkie-talkie on at Lombardi, you'll hear calls for Nurse Gabby 24/7. Nurse Gabby is our proud school nurse at Lombardi Elementary School. She may be young, but she's extremely knowledgeable, holding a master's degree from Wilmington University and numerous certifications, including a national certification in school nursing. Prior to coming to Lombardi, she spent eight years working at the Wilmington Hospital Emergency Room and still continues to do part-time. Nurse Gabby works closely with families, students, and staff members to maintain a healthy environment in which children can thrive academically, physically, and emotionally. This includes treatment with a smile and communicating with families. And she does. She is never flustered. She might have 50 kids in that office, but you go in and she's smiling and giving out Band-Aids and just, she's amazing. She keeps staff updated with any medical conditions you need to know about. She participates in IP meetings. She's a member of the Staff Relations Committee, and she participates in community walks with Pastor Ben and the Wilmington Police and Lombardi staff that we do once a month. Above all, Nurse Gabby is always looking for ways to improve Lombardi. Last year, she asked the PTA to purchase a vision screening device. I don't remember the exact name of it. But apparently, the school district only had one, and the elementary schools had to pass it around and share it. And she thought that was inefficient, that we could treat the kid, we could find students with vision problems quicker if we had another device. So, we were able to get the PTA to purchase one of those. And when Gabby realized that many families that come in to register, they need a notary, and we didn't have a notary in the office. And she said, can I become a notary so the parents can come in and don't have to run around, look for a notary? And I said, sure, that's a great idea. So, of course, she went right out, came a notary, and now she's Nurse Gabby, aka notary. She does it all. And then we also had an incident. Talk about if somebody doesn't get rattled. I wasn't gonna talk about this, but this year, we had a student who fell off the monkey bars, hit her head, and she was unconscious for about, I don't know, 10, 15 minutes. Nurse Gabby treated her, was telling people what to do. Go get oxygen, do this, put the neck brace on. Never, never got flustered. One of the comments from peers before I finish. Nurse Gabby is a walking presence, welcome bringing presence in our school. Students and staff alike feel safe and cared for by her. She goes out of her way to check up on her patients, and she is incredibly patient and kind. So, Nurse Gabby, thank you for being so kind and patient in treating our students and staff.
Okay, we have one more school with some awesome folks that we want to acknowledge this evening. Carcroft is our next school, and I would like to invite Principal Mark Overly. And I believe I saw, yes, Assistant Principal Clarence Smith. Would you please come up and join us at the podium? While they are coming, they have two people that are here tonight that are being celebrated. One is their Teacher of the Year, Shannon Little. And the other is their Behavior Health Professional, Catherine Zimmerman. Would you all please join us as well?
First off, Shannon Little. Carcroft is truly lucky to have such a wonderful teacher in Mrs. Shannon Little. Mrs. Little is one of the most requested third-grade teachers. She holds high standards for all students, gets to know each of them on a personal level, connects with her students' families, and is always willing to do what is best for her kids. Mrs. Little coaches cheerleading for fourth and fifth grade, is the Girls on the Run coordinator slash coach, runs a dance group after school, is an active member of the Family Engagement Team, supports families during the holiday season, has been a team leader, and is Carcroft's go-to when murals or signs need to be painted. This past year, for the Fall Festival, she designed and painted funny headstones for the festivals, and the students and the parents absolutely loved it. Mrs. Little encompasses all of the values we hope for in our staff members. She's positive, compassionate, hardworking, a problem solver, funny, flexible, and student-oriented. Please join me in honoring- Please join me in honoring Carcroft's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Shannon Little. Carcroft is honored that Kathy Zimmerman was selected as our Behavior Health Professional of the Year. Kathy brings so much enthusiasm, positivity, and ideas to support the students, staff, and school. She is in the foyer each morning, checking in with kids and staff, and ready to greet them each with a good, happy, "Happy Monday, yay!" That's what you'll hear her say. Mrs. Zimmerman runs the MTSS Tier One Monthly Meetings, MTSS Support Teams meeting weekly. She hasn't met a spreadsheet that she doesn't absolutely love. Mrs. Zimmerman is Carcroft's school psychologist and is very thorough in her testing of students, her presentation of the data, and her support to parents and the IEP team as she reviews the very sensitive data. Mrs. Zimmerman is truly kids-focused. She runs an after-school Legos Clubs for students, pulls therapeutic groups throughout the day, eats lunch with kids, is an active PTA member, an active Family Engagement member, and is always first to volunteer to help. Mrs. Zimmerman is not only here for kids, but also adults in the building. Staff members frequent her office for support, and she runs a Wednesday Wheel each week that gives out free coffee to staff members on Fridays. Only person hasn't won yet is Mr. Smith. It's weird. Mrs. Zimmerman goes above and beyond in all she does for Carcroft. Please join me in honoring Mrs. Kathy Zimmerman as Carcroft's Behavior Health Professional of the Year. And she is a Brandywine School District grad as well.
So month in and month out, when we recognize all the, you know, individuals from the different schools throughout the district, there's, there's a common theme that I hope everyone sees that, you know, as I listen to the presentations from the building administrators, I'm reminded of what my father said about, you know, whatever your profession is, you want to add value, diversify your skills. So he was a pipe fitter, but he learned how to weld, he learned electrical, he learned instrumentation, and that served him well throughout his career. And I think about that tonight as, you know, listening to the presentations that, you know, it's beyond going, it's going beyond the basics of your roles, you know, getting additional certifications, you know, becoming subject matter experts in things like MTSS and developing your emotional skills to connect with, you know, your students and your peers and leading extracurriculars and clubs like we heard tonight. And the one that I'm blown away by, even something, a small detail like becoming a notary to simplify the school process. So thank you to all of our recipients tonight that we recognized. Thank you for all you do for the district, and, you know, I hope your peers look to you and see, you know, the inspiration that you are and the value that you add to our district. Thank you. That will lead us to our superintendent's report.
Mr. Scrobout, members of the board, community members, audience. Can't help but smile after hearing those student reports, the amazing accomplishments. And when you think that it can't get any better, I'm going to share with you some things that are equally impressive that our students have accomplished tonight. At a previous board meeting, we shared that engineering teams at Concord and Brandywine High were named state finalists in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow competition. The team from Brandywine High was selected to represent Delaware and compete against 49 other teams across the nation. The field of 50 will be narrowed down to the top 10 finishers this coming Wednesday. While hopeful that they'll be selected among the top 10, even if they don't advance, their accomplishments are nothing less than impressive. As the state finalist, the team from Brandywine High will already be awarded $12,000 from Samsung to advance work on their project. So congratulations to Team Brandywine, and best of luck this coming Wednesday. Back in February, 16 students from Brandywine High School took the rigorous F equals M A exam, a qualifying exam for the United States Physics Team facilitated by the American Physical Society. Of these students, Nan John, pictured at the top, and Jonathan Pi performed well enough to be invited to take the USA Physics Olympics exam earlier this month to see if they can join the select few who will represent the nation and move on to compete in the International Physics Olympiad. This is the third time that Jonathan has reached this level of recognition on these qualifying exams in Anon's second. Let's see if you can match their level of physics quickly. Next slide. I'll give you 20 seconds to read the problem to yourself, and it's multiple choice, so you should be able to come up with the answer. Time begins now.
Is this where like 90% of the time it's C? You just guess C.
I took physics in college. I didn't take this kind of physics in college. Anybody want to wager a guess amongst the board as to the correct answer? If you do, then you have to give a justification for your answer. If not, we'll just proceed to the next slide. Oh, there it is. Simple once you see it, right? I love that last sentence. Oh, from basic understandings, you can see that the answer is E. So those of you who guessed A, you were right on the money. I can't even begin to tell you how impressive this is. Two years ago, we celebrated when one student passed that physics exam, took the physics exam. 16 students at Brandywine High had the courage and the skill set to take the most rigorous physics exam, and two of them placed in the top part of the nation. Unbelievable. Where does that start? That, that love of mathematics, that love of engineering, that love of computers, that love of physical science, started with the Vex Robotics, right? And sparking those interests at a young age and keeping those skills and interests at the forefront. So I can't underestimate the value of that Vex Robotics competition at the elementary level. In other amazing science news, again, right here at Brandywine High School, you heard it earlier, student Malte John presented at the March 28th Annual Newcastle County Science Fair. Her research on, again, hold on to your seats, the relationship between trabecular density, crack propagation, and bone strength, implications on osteoporosis. Yeah, I remember writing a paper on that too, back, back in the day. No. Won first place in her division and allowed her to move on and presented the Delaware Valley Science Fair, which occurred earlier this month. The Delaware Valley Science Fair is exclusive to only those who won in their regional fairs across Delaware, Southern New Jersey, Southeastern Pennsylvania, including the Greater Philadelphia area. In other words, the competition was stiff. At the Delaware Valley Science Fair, Malte again took first place in the physics division for 11th graders and received cash awards in recognition of her impressive work. Outstanding. The success doesn't start or stop just at the secondary level. It's picking right back up at the middle school level and switching contents from science to mathematics. Piesta Pont has a long tradition of being a powerhouse and a force to be reckoned with in the state and regional mathematics competitions. While I've had the pleasure of acknowledging their math competition teams for years, this year's accomplishment is nothing short of phenomenal. Both of Piesta Pont's eighth-grade Math League teams earned perfect scores in this year's competition. That means that each student on both teams scored perfectly, not a single error. As a result, Piesta Pont has two teams sharing first place, a first for the school and for the school district. Accomplishment doesn't stop there. PS also dominated at the seventh-grade level, finishing in second place. Special congratulations to these incredible mathematicians and their coaches, Mr. Jamie Fitzhugh and Mrs. Sabrina Fitzhugh. Truly, the tradition continues. Still in mathematics, what's the challenging competition just above Math League? Well, it's called Math Counts, even more challenging. And again, the PS tradition continues. But it also continues in the Math Counts competition. This advanced math competition is the equivalent of the NCAA Final Four Championship in mathematics. Congratulations to Team PS for their second-place statewide finish. There's a team member, Michael DeGenova, took third place in the state, earning him a spot on the State of Delaware Math Counts team and an opportunity to go to the National Math Counts Competition. Amazing success in core content areas, science, mathematics. But the arts are alive and well in the Brandywine School District. BSD had several school teams compete this year in the Odyssey the Mind competition. Pictured here is Piesta Pont's Odyssey the Mind team that recently took second place in this year's competition, and in doing so, has qualified for the World Odyssey the Mind Competition. Special congratulations to team members Scott Hanish, Kida Iyer, Aaron Kang, Cooper McDonald, Karina Ahn, and Dexler Wintle. When I say things are alive and well in terms of the arts, yep, we'll get to the celebration of the arts as you know it in terms of visual and performing arts. But there's also something to be said about the artistry that exists in physical sports. This year's spring sports are well underway. We wish all of our competitors the best of luck in their competitions. And one thing we can be sure of, Brandywine has a tradition of outstanding sportsmanship. I saw Mr. Mayor here earlier this evening. Concord has a reputation of winning that sportsmanship trophy year in and year out with his baseball team. We wish him the best luck in doing that this year, and all Brandywine teams focus on sportsmanship during their seasons. President Scrobout, you already mentioned what an outstanding job the Mount Pleasant High School Drama Department did in their presentation of Frozen. I too had the pleasure of attending one of the events. I see, or I saw a few volunteers that helped with that production in the audience earlier. Wish they had stuck around. What an amazing demonstration of music, talent, and ability. And equally thrilling on my part were the faces of the young audience members as they walked into that auditorium and as they engaged with the musicians and singers on stage throughout the performance. Just unbelievable time for our students, but also for our families and our community members. So congratulations to Mount Pleasant High School's Drama Department on an outstanding production. Speaking of outstanding productions, Piesta Pont also presented in the last few weeks their play Legally Blonde, enjoyed by all. Again, the arts are alive and well in the Brandywine School District. On March 30th, Up for Learning held their third youth adult conference, where they gathered in the multipurpose room at the Mount Pleasant Elementary to define what it means to be a leader. Students engaged in multiple learning exercises where several images of varying types of leadership were displayed that reflected leader characteristics of an alpha wolf, a flock of geese in B formation, and ants. Students were asked to reflect and decide which image best represented their group's leadership style, which style they respected the most. Then they discussed the strengths and weaknesses of each leadership style. Students engaged in collaborative structures to build community and discussing how these strategies might elevate and empower student voice at their schools. I think you saw evidence of that tonight in the student reports that were given at the beginning of the meeting. One of the activities included a design challenge where students were given eight minutes to create items of clothing out of newspaper. Students enthusiastically, and I mean enthusiastically, demonstrated their creativity and made connections to how their fashion items connected to student voice and their leadership. Up for Learning students spent the afternoon engaged in action planning with their school teams with a focus to strengthen teacher-student relationships and build community within each of their schools. Since the conference, school teams have had the opportunity to present to the faculty and engage them in strengthening relationships. For example, the students from Mount Pleasant High School shared the purpose of their Up for Learning team and followed up with sharing data from the Panorama Survey. The Concord High School team facilitated their most recent faculty meeting as staff were able to consider the benefits of understanding identity more deeply, which is to better build connections. Students are looking forward to the next conference, which is scheduled to be held in August of 2023. We'd like to take a little time to acknowledge that three of our Up for Learning student leaders will be graduating this year. From Concord High School, Jabomi Adadij, from Mount Pleasant High School, Talia Johnson, and Lea Eggleston. We appreciate the work that they have invested in defining student voice in BSD. Lastly, the Up for Learning student leadership would like to thank BSD Board members Kristen Pidgen, Reverend Shanika Perry, Kim Stock, and the BSD exec team for partnering with them to elevate and empower youth and adult partnerships. Last month, we showed you some sample artwork from our YBAE Young Brandywine Artist Exhibits. That display for the, at the elementary level ended, and secondary display went up. Members of the audience, if, if you have not gone to these exhibits in the past, I highly encourage you to mark your calendar for next year when the dates are announced. The, the talent, the creativity, the ingenuity that our students possess, that our teachers draw out of them is amazing. Here's just a random display of impressive artworks that I took with my cellphone. Amazing, amazing work. So kudos to our, our students, but also to our art educators who consistently go above and beyond for our kids. Quick reminder that summer camps are now enrolling. All this information can be found on our district website along with that link that some of our student leaders spoke about earlier to the B plus Foundation and the school competitions. It's located directly on our homepage in the headline section, so please look for it. And we'll end tonight's superintendent's report with what we call a sizzle video, highlighting some of the district happenings that maybe were not captured in this report this evening. Again, it's only been a short three weeks since the last board meeting, but a lot happens in our schools in a short three weeks. Enjoy.
So today I wrote one of my favorite books, Don't Let the Pigeon Stay Up Late.
Right on the baby steps. There you go. One and two and three and breathe. One and two and three and breathe. Alright, so it works, right?
Sure do.
Okay, very good to go. So hopefully next time when that one pops up, we'll be able to pick that every time and get it to work.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Surprise! Congratulations!
I've been with Harland for 11 years. I was an intern in the district and then I got hired and I've been here ever since. And I love it and I just feel like it's where I'm meant to be and it's what I'm meant to be doing with my life.
Say you want to be a nurse, that's your goal. Or you want to be a doctor, or you just want to be in healthcare in some sort of form. And this is like your, your ladder, right? You're starting somewhere. I don't say foot in the door, I say this is your stepping stone to where you want to go.
Aquarius, but you don't know about the stars yet. What you know about is the moon. Which are at the daytime or nighttime?
Yeah, that's great.
See all that patient here. One, two, and then you're ready to go.
There you go. There you go. It's going to be a lot faster than an actual like adult or teenager would listen.
Two on a night, 365 days a year.
One and two and three and breathe.
Good morning, Matt Meyer, County Executive here at Lancastershire Elementary. It's a beautiful, almost spring day. Here is Senator Kyle Evans-Gay, Representative Sherri Dorsey-Watt. We're doing something really exciting thanks to Healthy Food for Healthy Kids.
Haven't even kissed a girl. So what happens now? Seriously, things did not go well.
And I ask the question, how can you not be proud to be BSD? Mr. President, that's my report for this evening.
Thank you Superintendent Holer. Any questions or comments from the board? No?
No, just fantastic video and thank you so much to everyone who captures all of the videos and the pictures. It just brings everything to life and thank you so much to everyone in the district who is working just so hard for our students.
While we would all love to take credit for that video, the true credit sits right in front of me. Mick Austin has a way of capturing the essence. Like no, no one else. Thank you, Mick.
Next on the agenda is our public comment session. I had to check with Ms. Harris. I thought she was playing a prank on me. But we have no online Zoom speakers and no in-person speakers tonight. So we will move on to our board member liaison reports, starting with Mr. Ackerman with the DSBA Executive Board.
The executive board has not met since our last meeting, though I do want to report that I did attend the National School Board Association Meeting in Orlando at the beginning of April. As president of DSBA, it was important that we are represented as a state. We had about 35 board members from across the state attend. It was a great conference, a little smaller than usual. There was actually a competing conference going on at the same time in Tampa from a new organization that's trying to be spun up to compete with NSBA. At this point, I think Delaware is probably best suited to stick with NSBA until we see if this other organization is even viable and what they offer.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Ms. Gordon, Legislative Committee?
DSBA Legislative Committee has not met since our last school board meeting. We will be meeting on April 28th and on May 31st. After each of those meetings, I will be sending out a report on how our legislative committee representatives have discussed bills that have been passed in both the Senate and House and those bills that are still under negotiation. And if you have questions or concerns, please let me know.
Great. District Finance Committee met, forgive me, I remember we met on the 5th. When was the 5th? Ms. Floria will go over the items we discussed regarding the financial position report. And there were two tax abatement requests that have come through that we'll touch on under new business. And I believe the next meeting is scheduled for May 10th. Is that correct? Fourth, sorry. We're early to get in ahead of the board meeting on the 8th. Health and Wellness Advisory, Mr. Heller?
No meeting since the last meeting. I don't believe the next one's scheduled yet.
And Maintenance Advisory, Mr. Heller?
So on April 7th, April 4th, we met at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Most of the night was to discuss possible referendum needs at that building. So something that I found was interesting, so Mount Pleasant Elementary was built in 1932 and there's actually six buildings in the state that are identical in the bill to Mount Pleasant Elementary. So during that night, we looked at one of them, which was Milton Elementary in a recent renovation that they did there to show what's possible with that footprint of a building, which was pretty impressive. So we spent a lot of the night going through just bullet points on what the scope of capital renovations for Mount Pleasant would look like. And we also talked about overall school capacity in the district, Esther funding and how it's being used on maintenance projects, all the spring break work, which at that point was planned. But Mr. Reed shared today that there were 15 contractors on site last week doing updates in 10 of our buildings along with the facility staff. And then our next meeting is May 2nd at site.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Heller. Reverend Perry, I know the Parents and Citizen Advisory Committee meeting that was scheduled from our last meeting was canceled. Were there any updates to that?
No, I would, I would point to Superintendent Holer.
Okay. I know we scheduled, well, I'll, I'll take it actually. The previously scheduled meeting was canceled due to low, low turnout of RSVPs and we will look to reschedule that in the future in order to set us up for the upcoming school year. At this point, we're pretty late in the school year to, I think, be an effective committee, but we will continue to work to drum up the membership so that we can have a good plan, just hit the ground running come September. Ms. Pigeon, Parent Council, Students with Disabilities?
We've not had another meeting since the last board meeting, but there is an opportunity coming up on April 25th from 6:00 to 7:30 at Mount Pleasant Elementary School on Duncan Road. And the topic is behavioral interventions in the home. And you can RSVP so they can have an idea of the number of attendance for dinner. And people can reach out to their special education coordinator within the building for the link for the RSVP. And the next parent council meeting is May 4th. At Concord High School, it's available via Zoom as well from 6:15 to 8 o'clock.
And you said the RSVP to contact the school's special ed coordinator?
Yeah, the school's special ed coordinator has the link for the RSVP for dinner and babysitting planning.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Pigeon. Reverend Perry, Wilmington Learning Collaborative update?
Yes. So our last meeting, which was scheduled for April the 6th, was canceled due to the threat of the storm. While it was our desire to meet virtually, according to the regulations on public meetings, we were unable to meet without violating the FOIA Code, Delaware Title 29, Chapter 100, because of the meeting, the change in meeting location. Our next meeting will be held this Thursday, April, April the 20th at 6:00 PM. To date, the Wilmington Learning Collaborative Board has been working arduously to create a firm administrative and governance infrastructure to ensure the long-term success. The, while the, excuse me, the WLC MOU was and continues to be our primary governance document. However, it falls short of providing the day-to-day protocols necessary to govern effectively as a board. So some of our accomplishments to date have been completing the EIN paperwork, creating MOUs with our partnering organizations, Empower Schools, Delaware State University, the Department of Education, selecting our financial institution and continuing or solidifying our partnership with the financial institution, registering with the state's FSF system, creating fiscal and operational standards and practices. And we will complete our training, our first of two trainings for new board members this Thursday. As you can imagine, with, with these tasks, challenges arise and continue to have arisen, but and continue to arise. Despite the challenges though, the board has remained committed and steadfast in moving the work of the WLC forward. Our project manager, management group, subcommittee continues to work with our, our partners, Delaware State University and Empower Schools. The two institutions have increased their administrative and logistical support for the executive director search. Specifically, they've helped to develop the hiring rubric and have assisted with pre-screening candidates. The DSU and Empower team will also provide support to organize and include community participation in the hiring of the ED, provide calendar support and help cultivate better internal and external communication. Update on our executive director search. To date, there has been more than a interest from 100-plus candidates through the Delaware Department of Education's Join Delaware website, Indeed, LinkedIn, direct emails and phone calls. Of the 100 applicants, 64 chose to apply. Candidates were asked to submit an application along with their resume. All completed applications were screened utilizing the rubric and interviews will be scheduled with qualified candidates. Our goal is to hire the ED as soon as possible, but no later than July 1st. Our WLC bylaws are a work in progress. Our, we have consulted our council and will, those will be forwarded at a later date. Missalineous information includes some of our challenges. I've already addressed the governance piece with the, the MOU and the day-to-day governing policies and protocols. But one of the other challenges is communication with our external community and our surrounding, our respective districts. We have addressed that. We are continuing to address that by creating a website so that information can be, can be housed in a central location in addition to creating social media pages. I have also been in conversation with one of our parent reps regarding potentially hosting a podcast to present the WLC information in a palatable manner for parents and community members. I do want to acknowledge our district liaisons who have been also working diligently. Our, our district liaison, Ms. Lavinia Jones-Davis, has certainly been a rock star. Her initiative and responsiveness to the completing task has been noted and appreciated. Their challenge, however, is ensuring that the board is clear on the delineation of duties and responsibilities, considering that each of our district liaisons still have district-specific duties and responsibilities. Again, our next meeting will be held this Thursday, April the 20th at 6:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Reverend Perry.
Reverend Perry, can you share, I guess, what the process was to select the community partners? Was there like a application process or proposals that were reviewed or how was that selection made? And then also to any costs, I don't know if there's any costs involved with them, but if there is, does that, since it's a separate organization, does that go through the public bidding process or how does that work?
So the purpose of the WLC is to give more autonomy to building level or create more autonomy, autonomy at the building level. So we did not go through the state's accounting system so that we could utilize the funds immediately. And so the process was, we did have an open process where we had three proposals, one from Delaware State, one from Empower, and another from the new teacher project. And of the three, we felt that Delaware State and Empower met the needs that we were looking for and collaboratively would, would, would be able to not only meet our current needs, but also grow with us as, as we move on to, to, to grow and, and not only to grow, but also to accomplish the long-term goals and objectives.
Thank you. And the meeting on Thursday, where's the in-person location and where can people find the Zoom?
All of the information can be found on the public access, excuse me, public meetings website, publicmeetings.dellaware.gov. And the in, the in-person address is Delaware State University, the Riverfront location.
Great. And who, I guess, who has the task of screening through the 64 applicants? Will it be screened down to a, a next group to interview or?
Yes, that's actually currently being done. We have a subcommittee. So each of the categories that I named, we have a subcommittee working on those. So we have a project management subcommittee group and executive director search bylaws and the budget, and I did not actually provide it.
So it's the subcommittee of the board that will do the pre-screen?
Correct, in, in collaboration with Empower and Delaware State.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, members, for your reports this evening.
Mr. Scrollback, can I give a, I'm sorry, can I, can I give a report on the Educated Retention and Recruitment Committee?
Please, yes.
Okay, um, so the Educated Recruitment and Retention Committee has changed from a board committee to a district committee. And I just wanted to update the community on this because we did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago. And this committee is now going to be led by our HR Director, Delithia McIntyre. And we did have a small amount of people at our first meeting. Um, with a, with a couple of, of people, several members from last year's committee as well as including Ms. Mudape, who is our 2022 Brandywine School District Teacher of the Year. A couple of things that we talked about at our committee was to focus on four buckets of issues, if you will. The first issue is recruiting and really thinking of some creative ways to help educators know about how wonderful it is to be a part of this district. And we want Delaware educators to choose this district. And then also the other bucket is just staff support. What are some things that the district can do to support our staff and, and really address some wellness issues? And then the other, third bucket is legislative impact. So how would certain legislative- Um, so how would, uh, certain legislation, uh, coming up with the pipeline, how is that going to impact? Um, what is going to be happening in the classroom and in our schools? Um, and then our last, uh, bucket that we talked about is equity, diversity and inclusion, um, which I'm really excited about because that's part of our success plan. And, uh, just, uh, it's nice to see a continued, uh, commitment to, um, D E I initiatives. Um, and, uh, one of our goals is to include, um, and invite, we've invited, uh, some of our current twenty-twenty-two, uh, Building Teachers of the Year to be part of this committee. And, um, we'll be talking about ways to include our future, uh, Building Teachers of the Year for this committee. So, um, very excited for the work that is being done. And, um, I just want to assure the community that we are still making that commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Skorbock. Any other updates or committee comments? Okay. Uh, hearing none, moving on, next item on our agenda, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept the student matters as discussed in executive session?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Ackerman, first, who was the second on that?
Ms. Gordon.
Ms. Gordon, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us on to old business. Ms. Jones Davis, discussion for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five calendar?
Mr. President, a point of clarification. Are we voting on this tonight? Because it is listed in the agenda as a discussion item, not a voting item.
It should have been an action item. This is the second.
Second read.
Presentation.
Yeah.
I do see it's listed as a discussion item. If I can get additional clarification, we'll treat it as a discussion item for a second read.
Good evening, President Skorbock, Superintendent Holer, Vice President Heller, our distinguished board members, staff, family, visitors, and those, everyone who are joining us this evening for the board meeting, whether you are in person or virtually, thank you for your attendance. My name is Lavina Jones Davis and I am the chairperson for the District Calendar Committee. This evening, I am seeking, I was a seeking, seeking approval of their proposed district calendar six B for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. At our last board meeting, which was held on March thirtieth, two versions of the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar was presented, a draft calendar six A and a draft calendar six B. Six A shows schools are closed the entire week of Thanksgiving. And six B, schools are open on Monday, November twenty-fifth and Tuesday, November twenty-sixth. The remaining days of that week, schools would be closed. I will summarize for you the information that I shared on March thirtieth and provide additional information so that everyone has, um, information needed for discussion. Our calendar committee spends many, many hours planning our district calendar two years in advance. Our focus is and should always be on students and maximizing instructional time. Before showing the, going over the draft agenda, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear with the recommendation from the calendar committee that was shared last meeting. Uh, President Skorbock asked us, asked me what was the calendar's committee majority recommendation? And the recommendation was six B. But I also want to acknowledge our other members on the committee who were not necessarily in favor of six B, where schools would be open. Their preference is that schools would be closed for the entire week of Thanksgiving. So this evening, I will basically focus on the, uh, month of November because basically all the other months are the same, which I went over the last time. But I wanted to bring to your attention, again, for twenty-twenty-four, the month of November. Currently, let me see, barely see. Okay, for this particular, uh, calendar that you see there, this is actually six B, where you see that November twenty-fifth and November twenty-sixth, students would be coming to school that day. And the reason for that is that there are a number of reasons for that. But when you look at this particular month, uh, there have been in many individuals that have identified November as no school November. You look at this, out of twenty-one calendar days, students attend school thirteen days out of twenty-one. The proposal here is looking at to show eight days where students are not in school and reducing it by six days. And what that would mean on Monday, November twenty-fifth and Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, the way we have it currently, there's no school. But what we are proposing is that students come to school, staff, school is open for those particular days. Now, there are some pros and cons to this as well. Again, like I said in the very beginning, we do have members on our team who are teachers. So many teachers are teachers and also our families are familiar and used to having the entire week off of Thanksgiving, uh, families who prefer to leave and travel early. That is a benefit for them and our teachers would prefer, some of our teachers would prefer to have this time off. Having students come to school on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth will address those families who find it very difficult to find daycare, childcare for the entire week, for parents who work, to have to take off the entire week, has been expressed to us as a challenge for them. Also, there was mentioned, well, what if students are teachers, um, students are, do they have to review on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth? The quality of education is based on the educator. Our teachers who come in and will come in on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth will provide just as exciting, engaging information and lessons as they would throughout the school year. Some of our students do not go on vacation for that week and they are sitting at home with nothing to do. Allowing them the opportunity to come in would be beneficial. Also, our bus drivers and those who work in the nutrition department, they are not paid on the days they are not in school, or they, they don't have students. So they do take a hard hit that last week in November without pay, uh, when our drivers and our nutrition workers do not come in the entire week of November, uh, November twenty-fifth. So this evening, the goal was to ask for you to have a discussion. We had a discussion the last time, but I wanted to kind of review because in case members were not here before, in case our visitors or families didn't understand, I wanted to just kind of go over the reason for providing two versions of the calendar. Again, this version, kids would come into school twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. This is six B and six A is the way we currently have it, where the entire week is, is off. Any questions like to open it up for discussion?
Did the committee take into consideration, um, that we may, if, if, if teachers are going to take off on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, that it might put buildings at a deficit when it comes to?
Sure, that, that was a discussion as well. And of course, our hopes is that it, we're looking at two, two years in advance. It's giving families the opportunity to plan their vacation and time, is giving teachers opportunities. So we would expect if this is a day of work, that our teachers, our staff, the entire district will be at work.
So it seems like it wasn't that long ago that we made the change
Uh huh.
to go the full week because of staffing and attendance challenges. So last meeting, I was, you know, at the time leaning for six B. But after thinking about, we changed it years ago for a reason.
Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I believe.
I mean, has that not changed? And I, I would hate to, I would hate to see school be in session on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth
Uh huh.
and then face the same challenges with attendance or to keep it the way it is and have off on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth and then just push those same attendance issues to the twenty-first and twenty-second. So I guess my first question is, we, if we changed it in twenty sixteen, why is it different now?
I don't think it is different. It's just that for some parents, it is very hard to have students out of school so many days. Changing these two days does not change the overall calendar. It is still the same. We are just taking these two days and spreading them throughout the year.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the data from our teachers and it looks like they are overwhelmingly.
Yes, five hundred and nineteen or five hundred and seventeen.
I think I'm personally would have to vote with what our staff is looking at. Um, and I, and I do agree with, uh, President Skorbock, we did change it for a reason back in the day.
Uh huh.
And I don't think that's particularly changed, but I think it's a great idea to talk about this now long before we have to actually do it so that we.
Right. That, thank you for bringing that up. That's our purpose. I mean, although it was agreed and passed two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the calendar committee is always looking at opportunities for, of course, increasing instruction, also listening to parents about November. So that's why two versions of the calendar was presented. Instead of us coming and saying, this is what we recommend and not even offering the opportunity to have a discussion. So we, it's, it's fine to go with, um, six A and leave it the way it is.
I'm out of share. So my hesitation with taking away the full Thanksgiving week is, is that we're not actually adding instructional time. So if we were, I, I think it would be.
For November.
Brainer, but right for November. Um, but, um, for better or worse, I, I am concerned that just those two days, two days off, two days in, five days off, um, does make those days less effective than if they were, uh, five days in a row. And then with that concern with not actually adding any time, I think we're just kind of shuffling it around and not really adding any time. So that's a concern. Um, but a, a question for the next calendar for the future, uh, as Mr. Ackerman was talking about, that November eighth day, um, professional responsibilities day, if we move that into that week, then that makes the net result only one day instead of two that we had to talk about.
Professional responsibility is aligned with our contract as well. So we can't do much with that. There's not a lot of flexibility there.
That's, that's the day before the end of the marketing period.
Yes. Yes. So any other questions?
No questions, just a comment. When I look at the month and I think of, of students, continuity of learning, um, challenges, trying to squeeze in as much instructional time, pre-testing as possible, looking at twenty-one calendar days of possible schooling. And the question becomes, do you have kids out eight days or do you have kids out six days? I think we've got to be careful. If we are a professional organization and we say that school is being held on Monday and Tuesday, then it becomes a professional responsibility to, to be in attendance and, and doing your job. What I don't want to do is start to set calendars around adult preferences. We've got to keep an eye on what's best for kids and make our decisions based on what's best for students. If, if we start to take a look at convenience for adults, um, then we start slipping into, okay, uh, why aren't we taking off an additional day to make four-day weekends and five-day weekends during the course of the school year? Our job is to set a calendar that establishes the operations of the district. Operational need dictates when people can take off, uh, personal days. And I would hope that we are professional enough of an organization that we would not abuse personal days or sick days, uh, should the district choose to have school on that Monday and Tuesday. Again, twenty-one days, no school in November. It is an odd year because you have an election day in there.
Uh huh.
Um, that's not the case, the following year. That's why we set these calendars on an annual basis. Question becomes, uh, to me, eight, eight days off in November are six days. Voting member of the body, my, my heart leans towards six. Keeping some kind of continuity of learning. I very much appreciated what Ms. Jones Davis said about comments that have been made, well, there'll be unproductive days. When you are in front of a class, the teacher decides what a productive day is. Um, and we've got to keep that in mind. That's what a professional does. That's what we get paid to do. Will some students be absent because they're going on a family trip? They may, uh, but that could be the case any given time. So, uh, just little, little more to think about. It's not a voting action tonight. I think that was divine intervention that, uh, slip on the agenda. Does give us pause to all think for the next three weeks because we have an early May meeting where this will be an action item and we'll seek board approval on the calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Can I, can I respond? I think the, the purpose in raising that is because I feel that the quality of education on those two days will be impacted. So while they may be, um, in school, if we have buildings with deficient, uh, number of staff, then our students will be directly impacted. So I think we're all, um, considering students, um, over the staff. But we do need to also think it is, it would behoove us to take into consideration if, if that happens. How will that impact our student learning on that, on those particular days?
So the item is listed on, on the public agenda under old business. Internally on our board docs, we can see it as discussion. I, I would certainly entertain a motion to make it an action item tonight. Whereas if we haven't, if we have a motion and a second, we would still have time to discuss.
A motion and a second on one of the options.
You're making a motion to make it an action item? You're making a motion to make it an action item?
So move.
You're making the motion? We have a motion, do we have a second? To make this an action item this evening?
Second.
Have motion and a second. Additional discussion, so after hearing Mr. Holder's comments. I I kind of echoed that sentiment last month in, you know, the no school November and. This goes into a broader discussion of education in our country and, you know. Constantly hearing, looking for days off or social events, Super Bowls. You know, what have you, and you know, maybe this is an off year with that one extra day, you know. My earlier comments and the thoughts I've had about it over time since last month was yet. So we changed it back before, why are we changing it now? And the idea is to have more instructional time and making that time productive and. You know, hearing my own children speak over the years. You're talking about time off and. Half the class isn't there, we're not doing anything. Why is that? If if people want to go on vacation and pull their kids out of school? Why isn't the onus on them to get their missing coursework? To do the updates and teachers hold those students accountable to turn work in for grades, make it mean something that, you know. We have to put a higher, not not so much as a district, I mean, the job here is education, but. As a society and as families, we have to say that it's important to be in school and to make a productive time. Whether it's two days. I I just don't think that we should. Be easing off the pedal, I mean, you're there for the day. You wanna. Want to teach, treat teachers like professionals, they want to be treated like professionals. And I think, you know, part of what Superintendent Holder said i- is true. But we have to. Push our students to be professionals and they have a job, their job is to be students and to learn. And they can't do that if they're not in school, so.
With the same time, you overwhelmingly have staff. Who are just not going to have their part in for those two days. And are the kids really going to be getting what they need? And at the same time, you know, we did make this change for a specific reason. So I'd like to move that we accept calendar six A with the full Thanksgiving week off.
So, okay, so that's a good point, so the motion and second on the table is to make this an action item.
Oh, that's right.
So so let's vote on that, we're discussing about the calendar, which is another motion, so. The motion. To change it from a discussion item to an action item is seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous motion carries, this is now an action item. So are you making an additional motion for six A?
I would like to move that we adopt calendar six A, which is with the full week of Thanksgiving.
Do we have a second for calendar six A to be approved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for draft six A, the full week of Thanksgiving off. Additional discussion, as as we were saying.
Um, yeah, I I I would like to just say something, so um, yeah, as an educator, I feel I do feel very torn. To be completely honest, because I do feel that there has been a culture that has already been established. I would say that previous to receiving some information, I I probably would have leaned towards six B. Um, to be completely honest, uh, but. After receiving some more information and and quite frankly, not receiving. Uh, information or any or, you know, any any uh feedback from the community in terms of support for six B. But receiving an overwhelming amount of support for six A. I tend to also be in favor of six A largely because we have already. We have a culture uh that has been kind of already created and and established. You know, I would definitely encourage. All fellow educators to think about how to use those thirteen days in 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 November. Um, in a way that is that is meaningful. And um and how to just really encourage um those in my profession to really strongly um teach bell to bell. Um, and to put a lot of effort uh into um making meaningful and engaging um lessons where students want to be there and they want to, they they want to learn. Um, I think that's a reminder really for all of us. Really, which is at the heart and the issue of of this.
I wouldn't say that I've received overwhelming support for either, I think I've received one email regarding the calendar since our last meeting. Mr. Ackerman, your earlier point about. Hearts not being in it on the twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Think the hearts are any different on the twenty first and twenty second leading into? Leading into the vacation?
I would hope so, I would hope so too.
Mr. Scrobop, though, I have to say regarding that, I don't think you have any um evidence or background that. The twenty first and twenty second have traditionally been days that have been taken off by staff. Do you, I mean?
I don't, I know we looked at that at one point or. I don't know how many years back this was kind of, you know, seeing if there were any patterns of. Staff shortages leading into, you know, Mondays, Fridays, holidays, like where where does that occur? You know, to make sure that there weren't weren't any abuses, but no, I don't have any doubt for that, I'm just. Based on what we're hearing, what what I've heard in the conversation that. The twenty fifth and twenty sixth wouldn't be productive days.
I believe it was originally changed because there were issues with staff. Staffing the buildings at safe and meaningful levels. For for the twenty fifth and twenty sixth, when you had um in previous years prior to the calendar change. Was is my recollection of that.
Fair enough.
I also will say, I feel that um. We've talked in the past about doing changes like this where we've gotten community feedback, teacher feedback, kind of a a more um. Significant level, I do think that, you know, I know it seems like it's twenty twenty four and it's a year and a half away. But there are, you know, families who potentially have already established plans with other families from around the country and whatever, and so. If if this is something that. Is planned and evaluated, maybe a little more thoroughly in the future through the committee. Maybe with, you know, a district wide survey of families and communities as well as staff members initiated by the district.
But I think then we're getting back into who's setting the calendar, the district or the community? Or teachers or the students or? And I think we're we're trying to plan, this calendar gives it. A year in advance to to make that plan.
The goal by the district is always to increase student class time and seat time. This doesn't, we're spending all this time and this doesn't even do that.
But it gets two extra days of instruction.
In one month, but it's not.
Just moves them.
It's just moving them, it's not giving you, it's not giving students.
It's the highest month of students' absence throughout the year.
Like the continuity. So even before the calendar change, the highest number of absences occur in November. Or are you just talking about dead days off absences?
Right. And and I wasn't, of course, in this position when it was changed, but even from what I was told. The community that was surveyed was a very, very small population of the community and a decision was made. To have the entire week off.
Well, I think certainly if we adopt this tonight as is, there's certainly ample time to survey the community a little bit more. To see if there's a change of heart and you can always come back and revisit. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, uh, we we did it for a reason, the reason. Validity of that reason hasn't changed, we're not increasing instructional time, there's going to be the same number of minutes. Are we going to go with A or B?
For the year, yes.
For the year. So I I, you know, we're really just shuffling, chuffing things around a little bit, but I think. At the end of the day, it it gives people um the ability to plan. What they're doing in advance, I don't know how many people plan this far. But. It is something that we have done traditionally and I think other districts are doing, I mean, are we seeing other districts around the state? Are they even talking about their their twenty four, twenty five calendar yet? And the other question I would ask is, are they shifting towards a Monday, Tuesday? In-school model? Are there any districts that are doing that that we know of?
I would be less concerned whether our districts are doing, I think we could be setting the trend and moving.
Well, I mean, at the same time, you've got, you know, teachers who live in other districts. If their district is also, you know, taking the full week off, they've got to be in the buildings. They may have child carations, I I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as a consideration, I think, you know.
So we have, we have a calendar committee and the recommendation from the committee is B. So how? We discussed it last month, we discussed it here this evening. Ms. Jones, how? How much time did the calendar committee go back and forth, was it a unanimous decision on six A or?
The majority, the majority. But again, I, you know, I wanted to represent and make sure that our teachers on the committee, their concerns were heard as well publicly. And you said it is convenience, um, teachers are used to taking off this time, that doesn't mean that we have to continue something, but. How would you like to proceed?
Well, I mean, we have a motion, a second on the table. We done discussing, do any of the members have any additional comments?
I'll just say that I I agree with Ms. Pigeon that I think for um. For decisions like this, it is helpful to see the thoughts of different stakeholder groups. Which is gives me another hesitation to make the change, so we did get some data back from teachers. Um, but I wish it was a larger sample size, it only represents about twenty five percent of the staff. Uh, and and that's, but I think, I think knowing what different stakeholder groups think. Is important for us to make the decision, that's who we're representing at the end of the day.
But I guess my view is the calendar committee is supposed to be comprised of the stakeholder groups. Whether we can argue if that is a representative sample or not. I just don't think it behooves us to. Oversurvey in order to to make decisions in the district. Last call for discussion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion is, or is restated the motion, uh, to approve six A is the motion and the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Me. Any abstentions? No, motion carries, six A is approved.
Thank you very much for your time and the discussion as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old Business, uh, Mr. Rivera, Student Code of Conduct.
Good evening, last month, we presented the new draft of the Student Code of Conduct. Um, that was the first read and this month you'll see it is an action item. I am happy to take any further questions. I did not receive any other questions or comments from any other. Um, community members, teachers, and had a couple conversations with board members. But there was nothing new to report from the committee.
I I can't support this um code of conduct, I I like a lot of what you put in there, a lot of it is very, very good. But there's, there's no consequences for things, uh, you know. Profanity in grades six through twelve, first offense, student-staff conversation. What the heck kind of? You know, we 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 had folks out here from a school who were complaining about the fact that, you know, kids were out of control. And yet, literally. We're not giving them attention, it's it's only optional on a second offense. And I'm just thinking. Jeez, you know, you you can swear in school and just have, we're just going to have a conversation, maybe we'll make you write an apology. What the heck kind of, what the heck kind of consequence, we say there are all these consequences in the code of conduct. I'm going through the code of conduct, the consequences are all on subsequent offenses. You've let the barn door open, the horses have run out. And and now you're going to try to reel them back in with with more consequences on the subsequent offenses, I mean, come on. It's, there's no teeth in this code of conduct and I think that's what parents. Who came out from from Springer were talking about when they were talking about the code of conduct, I mean, I haven't looked at it thoroughly in a couple of years. But I'm looking at it now and I don't think we're, I mean. Maybe we're going to cancel privileges, maybe on the second offense. Come on. You know, and and okay, I get we have to have some restorative practices, I I'm I'm fine with that. But there needs to be some consequences too.
I would agree with that comment for sure, I would say in in terms of the example you gave there. The administrator who's applying the consequences will look at each situation and so they would determine in a situation of profanity. Did the student use a word that's, we would deem inappropriate in a certain setting and? If it was a minor situation, which was maybe not um a more common word that. Should not have been used but was used maybe with a friend or something, maybe that was a teachable moment, this isn't. Don't say that here and use the use of profanity code. The very next code of conduct violation is abusive and inappropriate language. So which has more significant consequences. And then there's also the inappropriate um. Behavior code that can also be used if it's something even more significant, which has suspension right there.
Inappropriate slash disruptive behavior S zero one oh one, language gestures, actions that produce distractions, frictions, disturbances. Again, first offense, staff, student, restorative conversation, parent guardian notification, optional. A verbal or written apology, restorative circle if applicable. And we don't get down to detention until we're in subsequent offenses. If you're interfering with a class and you're interfering with, and I actually looked earlier at the rights of students. Students have the right to be in class and not be disrupted. This is not enforcing their rights. This is just letting, in my opinion, just, I mean, okay, we're going to cancel privileges after you've disturbed the class four times. Really? How are we expecting kids to learn if a a teacher or another student or a school activity is being interfered with? Language gestures or actions that produce disturbances? I don't get it.
Mr. Ackerman, I think that's where discretion of the administrator has to come in and I'm going to use an example that I did. When I presented the code of conduct to my students at PS and at Harlan. And of course, it was a small setting, did it with two classes. But I would get the auditorium quiet and I'd do this. I'd ask the kids, is that a violation of code conduct? Well, um, boy, you're tapping on your desk, other kids are trying to learn, concentrate. Would I consider that my classroom disruption? Probably not on first offense, I'd walk over and say, Johnny, knock off the tapping. But if Johnny continues to do it. And it continues to disrupt what I'm trying to do, learning that's taken place in that classroom. Then it can be an action that disrupts the classroom. So everything has to be taken in context, uh, and I I think that's what the code has tried to do and that's. The discretion that the administrators have to have when they're applying that code. There's a big difference between one curse word and another curse word. Because uh, you know, at my house when I was growing up, I'd get the backhand on some words. And the strength of that backhand uh was often determined by the the word that I might have let slip out. And uh, that's probably a poor example, but that's the way it was in my house. And again, in the classroom, uh, yeah. Inappropriate slip versus dropping an, an F-bomb are way different. And that's what that code tries to give the administrator, the teacher, the discretion to, to decide between. Ultimately, yeah, you'll never find a code that is clear, cut and dry on every single issue, every violation. Because there's so many subtle nuances between and how things happen and where I was cutting, dissecting the fish and I sliced my finger open. I might let an expletive fly that I normally wouldn't have. All those things come into play.
So I think we have time for, for discussion, but you know, as it's presented on the agenda. It's the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four student student code of conduct as submitted. Does anybody want to make a motion or I'll entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve?
Make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Motion, Ms. Pigeon, do I have a second? No second, the motion dies. So I guess we can continue to discuss, discuss it. We could have, you know, continued to discuss it with a motion and a second and voted up or down. To me, I think that, you know, changes have been made if, if they're not perfect and members of the board want additional things added. It's a work in process. This doesn't stop us from continuing to modify the student code of conduct going forward. But, you know, as outlined last month, it looks like, you know, this revised version brings us into alignment with state code. We've added additional restorative consequences. We've updated learning consequences with some of the social emotional learning assignments. And again, making changes to, to the language. I, I think, you know, it's unfortunate that we're not moving this forward tonight because it doesn't. I don't know that we're going to get everything to a point that's agreeable for everybody. I mean, that's, we, we have tools, updates were made, they've outlined the updates. You know, let, let's make the change now to improve the tool that we have. And if we want to keep tweaking it, you know, do so. I think, you know, Ms. Ackerman, you do some of the. I, I don't think we should be drilling down to the nuanced specifics of all these different scenarios. I think.
I'm quoting directly from the code. And I just also want to point out that the update sheet that I got is not comprehensive. There, there's a lot of other red lines and changes throughout the document.
Can I jump in?
A little bit, you know, a little bit more than this. Again, I, I would just like to see like maybe some of these optional on, on second offenses move up to optional on first offense. And maybe some of these things become mandatory on, on second offenses.
Can I jump in? I know I'm in the corner.
Please.
Hard to see. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Rivera. So your experience as a previous principal in a middle school, previous teacher. I know you have many administrators on the committee that have been working on this. And would you say that for the, that the committee is comfortable and can, and believes that this addresses the concerns of the public that have been addressed through Springer Middle School? That we've heard? Because I also think that as part of that committee and your role in the district, you have met with members of the community to, that have been working on some recommendations. Have those recommendations been incorporated into here?
Great question. To answer those questions, absolutely one hundred percent. So new to me this year, I'm just being honest. I was wary that you get any group of people together, talk about the code of conduct. You're never going to get everyone to agree, right? I was blown away that the entire set of recommendations coming to you here was unanimously agreed upon by everyone, which included administrators, teachers, district personnel. You saw the lists and the, it's in the presentation, like fifteen members and people kept adding. Anyone who had questions, open, transparent, come join. I kept stressing to everyone who was there, remember you're a representative. So every time we meet and you have homework to do, go back, talk to your groups, bring feedback back to the committee. Six of us are also BSD, current BSD, parents some had, we have more who had members whose children had graduated. The committee worked very well together and everyone felt extremely comfortable. We did, we only added consequences this year to the recommendations, listening to feedback. You're right, I did meet with the Springer families. They had a, a code of conduct committee meeting that was well advertised. And I think there were about eleven people who came out, half were teachers of the building. And they were gracious and allowed me to attend their meeting at Springer about a month or so ago. And they went through their concerns and we opened up the code. And as they wrote through the code, their big one, the big example they were talking about was fighting and thinking that there were consequences. And as they opened it up and read it, they said, oh, okay, there are suspensions and oh, there is alternative placement. So a lot of their questions that night, they left with no ask or recommendation at that meeting. I think it became a lot of questions made, asked about the process, how things work, what the code really says. Because it was first time, many of us have actually opened it up together to see and then learn about the alternative placement process and how that actually works. And they were extremely gracious and thankful and and excited that I came and answered their questions and they felt better about the code. And some of it came more to understanding about the application of the code. Couple of the comments made was, well, looking at the data here versus other schools, maybe why is it, the parents began to ask, why is it, why does it seem like the code's working at certain schools, but the school were, were struggling? And that's where that conversation went that night.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera, I just want to say thank you so much for taking the time, A, to just explain that to the community as well as taking the time to talk with me about my concerns about the changes to the code of conduct. I, I do really appreciate that. One thing I really appreciated from our conversation, if you don't mind me sharing, is that one of the things that you had talked about in your committee was to think of it in terms of if it was your own child. And, and what would you like to see your own child? What kind of consequences would you want to be dealt to your own child? And obviously, there's, you know, for every person, there's going to be a, a different answer. But I did really appreciate all that perspective and it did help me to, to think, to, to think about the changes and, and what your committee had done. And also just kudos to you for running, obviously, a very well organized and well-run and functional committee. Because I'm sure that, I can't imagine honestly, a scarier task than to head up the code of conduct committee. You know, again, one of the things I had asked the community last time that we had this discussion was to please give us feedback about, from the community, in terms of your thoughts, in terms of the code of conduct. I don't believe I received any feedback. I don't know if any other board members received any feedback about the code of conduct.
The only feedback I received was that a student could literally vape in class and, and have virtually no consequences. And I, I just searched the entire document for the word vape. I found it one time under buses. I also searched for smoking, I found that in the same line. So I don't, I guess that might be disruptive behavior. Maybe that's how you classify something like that, but it certainly wasn't called out directly unless, unless you can tell me.
On page sixty-two.
Page sixty-two?
Well, that would be if you're caught with a vape. Now, understand in the example, that example is a different situation. So now you're talking about multiple code violations, which now you stack consequences. So someone who's doing that in front of a class, like that's also inappropriate. Now you're inappropriate behaviors. Now you have multiple offenses happening that will have more significant consequences versus someone who has a jewel or a vape that falls out of a bookbag or something like that, which will fall under the pack of possession and or use of vape bin is listed there.
And, and I'm not, I'm not knocking the K five part. I'm really not, because my, my theory, maybe I'm wrong, but my theory is, is that if the system you're putting in place works by the time they get to grade six, then they're used to, you know, this type of system and the MTSS and all that is working. And we shouldn't have as many problems from sixth grade. But I think from my perspective, you're starting in, in sixth grade to twelfth grade. I think it just has to be more consequence earlier.
So first I want to say I agree with Mr. Holder that administrator discretion is really important. But to slightly echo Mr. Ackerman's point and I, I'm probably just missing it. But if we just look at the abusive inappropriate language one, I think it's right to give administrators leeway. I, I feel like they need to have options, but the way that I look at that one, especially for K to five, is that on a first offense, there's no option at all for detention. Is that, so, so where does the administrator leeway come in if they believe that the incident warranted detention? But it doesn't look like the code gives them even an option to do that. So that's kind of my question. Why, is why, why isn't the list of options broader to give the administrator who's actually there in the moment? The ability to make the decision that's right in the moment to give them broader options, I guess.
So the, if, and, and I could have probably have done this in a more clearer way than what document you're looking at. So when you look at the, the summary page, updates to all levels, there are those four, four bullet points that are being updated everywhere. So I didn't add that as, I think it maybe was, Mr. Ackerman, I forget who said it. But that they see a lot more red in the draft. That's because these are added to every const, every violation. So these are additional. So to your point, Mr. Heller, the cancellation of privileges would be added there as well as, as an option.
To first offense?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're saying where it says optional cancellation of privileges, verbal or written apology and detention would be within both?
Be an added.
First offense and subsequent offense?
Yes, you have, you would have an added bullet point of the phrase cancellation of privileges such as, but not limited to, before and after school activities.
Okay. So the draft that we're looking at makes it seem as if that only falls under subsequent offenses?
Okay, that I would.
It says update to all levels, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't, okay, but then you have to go to that paper to say update to all levels.
Yeah, so there, if, I don't have that draft in front, but that could be one of those
Gotcha.
missed bullet points that I need to add, so that was a good catch.
I'll make a motion to accept the student code of conduct.
With that understanding.
With that one bullet point added or one clarification being made?
Yes, that is part of what was submitted.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, with that understanding.
Motion and a second with the understanding of making that clarification. And, and I'll just add to the conversation that, you know, to me, the, the code of conduct is only as good as the implementation. Sixteen schools in our district. Clearly, some schools are doing it better than others. But it, you know, it, it's a tool that hopefully, you know, we, we can get all schools to elevate the implementation. And while there may be some pain in the short run in doing so, the long-term benefits, as we have seen in other schools, can be turned around and improve, improve the environment. We have a motion, we have a second to accept code of conduct with the caveat clarification as mentioned.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to say with the, with the caveat that Kristen pointed out, I think I could probably also support the changes.
Right, any additional discussion before vote?
Um, I just want to say that this is a very, um. My concern wasn't really the changes, it was the brevity. Like this is, see the document. And, um, parents are, parents and guardians are being asked to sign off on it. And so even having, ensuring that families are getting this information and that they will actually read the updates and understand what they are signing. And I'm, and I, I'm not saying that the onus isn't on the family signing this, but the likelihood of someone reading a hundred and sixty-three pages is highly unlikely. So I just wanted to, that's really my concern with the document. And I'm not, I'm not even saying that the information here isn't necessary, the updates aren't necessary. It's just, it's a lot.
And, and I think we could make that a, you know, a, a separate item for another meeting to maybe include like an appendix or an update of changes or a summary page in future editions that kind of highlight and maybe summarize the changes from a prior year to make it a little user-friendly. But I think your point is well taken.
I, I also want to say, I think, Reverend Perry, that the code of conduct is a very daunting document as a parent receives. And, but the students do spend time in school, the beginning of the school year and in social studies, I think. And they do go over the document. I think it may be one or two full class periods going over. So the students themselves do spend time discussing the code of conduct.
Multiple times a year. So every school right now is doing it again as they came back from spring break. Because most of us think of it in terms of the violations of behavior, but there's a lot more to the document, to your point, such as attendance. So we, we try to put all that relevant information in one place for parents so they can look in one place to find this information.
Of course, the, the best prevention against behaviors and, and having to look for consequences is when, you know, students are feeling, you know, safe and, and students are feeling like they belong. And so just a continued continuation for our schools to continue to work on that.
Motion and a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, board members, for your collaboration on that matter. New business. Ms. Florrie, financial position. And we'll do tax abatement requests will go out of order.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here tonight with the monthly financial position, or the monthly financial report. I'm sorry, the position report will be May first, so that'll be next month. But they essentially say the same thing. I think I was inspired by our student leaders tonight who gave a reflection on the year. And I was thinking, it, it's been six months since I started. And, and though the numbers I'll present are relatively simple in terms of us being on track, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, it's been an incredibly, incredibly busy six months, more than the numbers reflect. And that in addition to monitoring budgets and performing all of the payroll reconciliations with all of the additional units we talked about in the budget. There's certainly been a comprehensive review of our financial procedures, both for efficiency, to make things easier and to support all of the activities that you saw in the amazing video. But we've been, you know, regularly doing our federal reports and tracking through ESAR, providing trainings for. It was amazing to me, the number of new administrative staff we have here. And so kind of working collaboratively on, on how they can best utilize their budgets and track them as well. As well as reorganizing the budget a little bit and working through our tuition funds. And then preparing our upcoming contract negotiations, preparing the FY twenty-four budget. And then at the next meeting for the finance committee, I'll give a, a three-year forecast. So all that said, there's been a lot of work going into it. On the revenue side, we're at ninety-eight point one percent of local revenues received. Ninety-eight point eight percent of state categorical funds received. 98.8% of state categorical funds received, 90% of state discretionary. So, I'm sorry, 83.2 of state discretionary. I'm sorry, you can't read the numbers, they're so small. But overall, we're at 98, 90% of revenues received, which is on track and exactly where we'd expect to be at this point in the year. Most importantly, on the local side, at 98.1, with the largest one coming in for the senior property tax from the state. On the expenditure side, we're at 73.82. For this point in the fiscal year, you'd expect to be at about 75. So we're just under where we would expect to be on the expenses. So always good to be a little bit ahead on revenue and a little bit behind on expenditures. The committee goes into great detail, looking at prior year appropriations, as well as the ESAR 2, ESAR 3. We're coming up on the conclusion of ESAR 2. And we'll move all of the remaining expenditures for ESAR into ESAR 3 because that one has a longer expiration date. ESAR 3 right now has 12.7 million remaining, which we will utilize in the next fiscal year. All that said, we are on track for this last one, the cash flow, which is going to be the same in the financial position report you receive next month to end the year at approximately $8.6 million. Again, sufficient to meet our, our cash needs going into the next fiscal year. But I think that three-year forecast will be very illustrative of where we're coming up short on the revenue side versus expenditures and where we'll be in the next year and looking at a referendum.
Could you just go back to page five, the yellow highlights?
Mm-hmm.
Just point those out for the floor.
Yep, they're exactly the same as they were last month. In the, sorry, Mr. Rivera, the one is the Torgow. We just have to move those expenditures there. Sorry, I just didn't do it last month. But it's already been done for April. But those are the expenses that the students paid for the trip. They just came out of his budget, but they essentially paid for the trip itself. The other one, though, I will, I will point out, will remain negative for the remainder of the fiscal year to the tune of approximately $500,000. And that is in energy, in operations and utilities. Between all of the expenses in that operating unit, the budget is not sufficient to meet the expenses. And so it will, and that's something we'll talk about in detail at the finance committee meeting next month. And then the other one is support services. Those are expenditures that actually belonged under ESAR, so that one will disappear.
Any additional questions from the board? We have a motion to accept the financial position report, subject to all of it?
Some moved.
Second. Motion second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Can we jump, are we going to present on the tax abatement?
I don't know which one is first. I will do 250 executive drive first. The two, both of the properties in question or up for action are located in the Christina School District. Because of the tax pool, because of the first 46.8 cents of all taxes levied for the four different school districts when we were all one, when an abatement is approved, it has to be approved by all four districts. Christina's School District approved both. And there are two different scenarios. But the first one, 250 executive derive, was an error in calculation. The property requested a refund and the Christina District denied the request. The property sued. And there was a motion from the Superior Court that Christina was in fact liable for paying the or providing the refund. We, as the tax pool participant, are a much smaller component of that. That error went back to, all the way to 2006. So the impact for Brandywine is $3,477.55. The important thing to note is anytime that's approved, it's approved as a credit on the account. And so in the event, in their case, they would be eligible for taxes. So it would be against their tax bill in the future as a credit, as opposed to us providing, you know, monetary exchanges back to them. The other property, so that was a commercial property. The other property was a tax-exempt property. It was a church. And there was actually legislation passed at the state, HB 412, that was passed somewhat as a result of COVID and the county's ability to do refund or abatement requests during COVID. And in the case, the law used to be that if you didn't get your application in by March 30th, I believe, it might be March 1st, I think it was March 30th, then you paid taxes for that year. They removed that and said that it can look back three, up to three years to the date that the property was deemed to be exempt from taxes. So in this case, not sure why. In this case, the church was in fact tax exempt all the way back to 2019, but it wasn't approved by the county until a later date. So this complies with the recently passed and signed legislation. And this provides that abatement for a tax-exempt property, a church. Again, that resides in the Christina School District back to 2019. That amount, again, because we're the smaller, they're the main district, we're just a participant in the tax pool, that amount for us is $805.73.
So as discussed in the finance committee, I mean, this, bringing it before the board to be voted on as member of the tax pool is really mostly a formality because it's already been taken to court for Christina. And in the event we didn't approve it, we would likely fall to the same lawsuit.
Possibly. There are certain criteria in which the deliberations have to happen and the kind of back and forth. And so it's a, I actually brought it, it's a lengthy read for the Superior Court. There's a process that we have to go through. So I think the next time, I know the next time we go through, we're certain to receive a refund request in the future. And so we'll use that case to kind of guide the board. And the attorney, I'm sure, will guide the board in kind of what the process and deliberations should be and questions should be. But yes, I agree with what you said.
I guess we can vote on these together. Do we have a motion to accept tax abatement request 11-021-00-044? And tax abatement request 26-042.10-567?
Some moved.
Second.
What, um...
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I was just going to ask, what type of commercial business is on the executive drive?
I believe that's the banquet center.
Just curious.
And it was an error in square footage. In the calculation of square footage.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Florrie. Moving back to new business item B, draft of board meeting dates and times.
This is just a first read provided to the board, have gotten some feedback already tonight. And we'll have to go back and make sure that there's not a board meeting immediately following an extended break. So we'll go back and check those times and make sure that those are in there. I'll put an update in board docs and we'll go from there next meeting.
And just wanted to be noted that November 20th is Thanksgiving week. And June 17th is Eid.
June 17th is what?
Eid.
Oh, Eid. So this is listed as an action item, is there no recommendation for action?
No, no, this is first read tonight. And we'll take that back and take a look at it. Being the Monday of Thanksgiving week, is that what I hear you saying, Ms. Pigeon?
That's right.
There will be no students in school that time because next school year's calendar's already been approved, that's a day off. So the board would opt not to have a board meeting on the 20th, but probably move it up to the 13th or something. Okay, we'll take a peek at that. We'll put an update in board docs and bring it back to you next month for approval. We'll all be on vacation that week.
Not me.
I will not be.
Thank you, Mr. Holter. General information and meeting dates. Next school board meeting, May 8th, as mentioned earlier this evening. I think there was a typo on here. The board workshop is May 22nd at Mount Pleasant Elementary, followed by board meeting June 12th and July 10th, as well as our board retreat July 26th. Any final comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time and participation this evening. Have a great week.
Thank you, ladies.